Okay, we'll start this meeting, we'll call this meeting board and we'll start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public participation, approval of the minutes from January 8th. All in favor?
Code enforcement report. All right, just a couple of highlights, 604 Chris Cross, I should have that stormwater plan and everything I need from them hopefully this month. So we can get that addressed. Kirbyville Hotel, they're excited to get to work, so excited that they thought they could start before the permit was issued. So we had to do a stop to that. We've got zoning at 14492 Pittstown Road, which is Dietrich Court. That commercial property that sits out front, they want to do a change of use in there. There's some requirements that they have to follow through to do that, not sure if they will. The Lake Road issue with the hybrid wolf, I guess is, I guess they have their animal now. We haven't heard anything. 330 Line Road, our favorite property, the shed was finally delivered this fast Thursday. And I anticipate getting on the property within the next week because he has another date scheduled in front of the judge if he doesn't. So he can get his tractors and the rest of his debris inside the building, that should put that to bed. And then... For the period, we issued five building permits, total improvement value of $100,563.43. Fence, electrical permit, roof of the shed, so pretty quiet week, that's all I have.
All right, questions? All right, the SC over park. Any questions on that?
Looks pretty quiet there as well.
Police report.
Also pretty quiet for January, and 140 incidents, 13 crashes, issued 13 traffic citations, 32 vehicle stops. Criminal investigation time, 29 hours and five hours support time, just some of the highlights. And then we had harassment cases still open and domestic no arrests. They have a part-time officer, the newest one, he's currently in the FTO program, he should be out of it shortly, he's experienced. Finally got the 2023 Explorer, thanks to an out of service, that's all I have.
What's FTO?
It's field training, it's field training program.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Virgin Little Fire Company report, the request of approval of $20,970 for the truck payment, I make that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Walnut Town Fire Company report. Walnut Town's requesting $24,529 to be released for truck repairs and compressed air systems. I need the motion, that be approved?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did I send your resolution for this? I recommend that you do this agreement with the county, I mean, the township has participated in this appeal board in the past. This is just an update of the agreement between the county and each participating municipality. This is a board that hears appeals from denials of building permits or if somebody wants a variance from a standard in the building code. This board will handle that and it's a, I think, a good way for townships to get that work handled. But procedurally, we need to have a resolution and I guess we overlooked it, but I would recommend that we roll this over and that you approve it once I have a resolution ready for you, we can do that at the March meeting.
They do have something attached here to this and I don't know if that's the official one.
That's the agreement, that's the interminable agreement. So they sent you the interminable agreement, but they didn't send you a form resolution for approval. In fact, if you look at the effective dates, they showed down here, they say that it's effective upon the adoption of an ordinance by the municipality. But we're not, we don't need to do an ordinance, a resolution is sufficient. Anyway, so we need to backfill that, any questions about that? So I would recommend putting it back on the agenda for March, they'll be happy to get it in March. No, I would just leave it table until next month, until we have a resolution.
Okay, motion to approve certification of unpaid tax bills, it's quite a list. Make the motion to approve it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve tax collectors expenses, where's that? Oh, there it is. I'll make the motion to approve it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to approve resolution 2024-08 joint comprehensive plan. That's our partnership with Fleetwood and Avery. Right?
Yes.
I make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Discuss agreement with Lifeline EMS, did you read this, Chris?
I did, I had some comments. It's lengthy, very lengthy. Township entered a five-year agreement back in 2017 with Lifeline. And at that time, Lifeline said there was no compensation from the township's son, although they were open to any voluntary financial support from the township to support future operations. That agreement was for an initial term of five years. And it said at the conclusion of this timeframe, this agreement will automatically renew on a yearly basis to ensure there's no disruption of services. So in my opinion, the agreement has become a year-to-year agreement and we didn't receive any communication, to my knowledge, it said that they weren't going to renew this contract. But they asked for a financial contribution, the township, I understand, budgeted $2 per resident, is that right?
Yes.
Which would have been $7,214. And now you've received a proposed agreement that would have you pay $18,000, which comes out to roughly $5 per person. That's what they asked for. Have they come and presented any justification to you about their reason for? They were here a year and a half ago, memory service, am I right? I don't know that they, they were just basically giving us the pension for service, I don't know that...
That's when Curtis Town had stopped and they wanted to assure everybody that they were going to take care.
Right, and it was more of a reassurance thing that they were going to handle and I don't think, did we talk about?
No.
A financial, I don't think we...
No, it was just, that was basically just in an email and we tell them, just basically, this is what we're looking for.
Well, maybe we're here that night, those two gentlemen were here.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I don't think we talked money at that time.
Yeah.
Well, what I can say is that there are a number of fire companies in the county that are in desperate straits financially. I don't know if that applies to Lifeline or not and I don't know if anybody here is able to answer that. But I know that because of the financial distress that certain fire company or ambulance companies are having, that they are seeking and some municipalities are agreeing to provide substantial financial commitments that they've never done before. And that is to keep those fire companies or ambulance companies, I'm sorry, ambulance companies in business. And I'm wondering, is Lifeline in the same condition? Or are they exploiting the financial weakness of these other ambulance companies to put their hand out and try to get a chunk of the money that might be available? And again, I can't answer those questions, but I want to share with you, you know, we've had discussions at CEOG, Center for Excellence in Local Government about the distress that a number of ambulance companies have, that, you know, within a year or two, if there isn't a major change in the way that these ambulance companies finance it, they're, you know, possibly going to go on. So there is a real financial issue for a number of ambulance companies. But again, I don't know if that's Lifeline or not. But just to give you an example, some municipalities in the western part of the county rely on Western Berks Ambulance. And they are seeking financial commitments from a number of different municipalities. And, you know, one of my clients is Wyman's Sing Borough and they have committed to a per household fee, $35, which is more or less what I think what the subscription was that the ambulance company had been seeking. And so the town or the borough is paying this lump sum in place of subscriptions. And Western Berks is saying they will not solicit the residents for subscriptions, they will just take the money from the borough in place of that. But what it comes out to at $35 a household, if you do that on a per capita basis, is basically $12 per person in the borough. And I know that Spring Township and some...
I've paid as well.
You are, do you know what your pay?
$45 a household.
Yeah, I think that's the...
$58,000.
So, you know, so your per person rate is pretty high too, then?
It's probably, you know, what do they figure average per household?
Three.
Three, and it's $15 a person.
So, anyway, is that Western Berks?
No, that was with Tower, we had been with Southern Berks, Southern Berks went by the wayside and Tower came in. So we've had them now for four years maybe, but their costs are escalating as well, but you've got to have ambulance coverage.
So I guess what I'm saying is a couple of things, number one, I think they should provide some justification and not just present a bill, but I also think that it's probably real that, you know, there's financial challenges with keeping these operations in place. And you don't want to have them pull out and say they're not going to serve your community. I mean, I think that would, you know, you're exposing yourself to the risk of some tragic circumstances here in the community if people call 911 and no ambulance shows up for a medical emergency. So I don't know what you want to do with that, but I would, if you haven't had them come in and talk about this specific financial commitment that they're seeking, that would be the next step that I would recommend, because it is a large financial commitment that they're asking you to make. It might be justified, but I wouldn't just sign up for it without knowing what their situation is and how it compares to some of these other situations that Jeff and I have talked about. And they are looking escalated, you know, it's $5 a person for two years and then
Up to seven.
They wanted it to go up to $7, so that in years, four and five of this agreement would be $25,000 a year. So again, this is a large, new financial obligation, but again, I think, I think it may be justified. Something I didn't see in this agreement that I think would be something to talk about also is whether they will take your residents where your residents ask to go for emergency services. You know, I don't know if you have anything like that in your agreement, but, you know, obviously, this is a Penn State Health thing. Are they going to automatically take emergency calls to Penn State medical facilities? Or if a resident says, I want to go to Leon Valley, are they going to take them to Leon Valley? So that would be a question I would want to have a discussion about because, you know, your disagreement has something to do with the options that your residents have for where they're going to receive emergency medical services. And then the last time I had is they wrote your address as the address of the Dairy Township Municipal Building, which is not where we are located, so that would be a correction that would be necessary. Oh, they also have this weird thing in here, I don't know if you noticed it. The agreement that they copied to make your agreement must have had some kind of a facility commitment within the community. Because they removed the section six called facility on page three. And then in the following paragraph, there is a defined term of dedicated ambulance, which is not defined in the agreement, but was probably defined in that paragraph that they removed from the agreement. So I'm, that would be something else that I would want to ask them about is, you know, from what dispatch are they serving your community? Are they going to have a facility in the neighborhood, you know, what's going to, what are their times of arrival going to look like? Because they don't have a commitment to have a facility in your township and this reference to a dedicated ambulance is undefined. Well, we should invite them to come and give us the pension, that's...
It sounded like you have enough questions for them.
One of the big issues that they keep saying they're having, this is the way the insurance companies pay. They're not paying the service directly, they're paying the patients. The patients are not turning the checks over to the ambulance company.
Well, that's a problem for Western Berks, I don't know if it's a problem for Lifeline, I don't know, is it a problem for Tower?
It seems to be the problem for everyone.
All right, because I thought that if, if the ambulance company was owned by a medical facility, that the medical facility could rail the insurance company directly.
That's correct.
And they could get paid directly. I thought it was only independent ambulance companies that couldn't get paid directly by the patient because they were not a medical facility.
You're correct.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's the case. So again, that, that payment problem applies to some ambulance companies, but not all of them.
To Tower or Lifeline?
Right. So that's again, you know, where I think, talking about what is the financial justification for this? Again, are they in dire straits like some other ambulance companies? Or, or are they just taking advantage of the situation? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, it certainly might be a big one, either north or south of here is a big one, a lot of people. And that's something we should explore whether they can do it, because I would think that the best situation would be that the patient can say where they want to go.
Absolutely. I almost deserve, almost, in my mind. Maybe what we should do is, I guess they, they said they would come and talk to us and something like that. If it becomes a major budgetary thing, you know, something we'd have to, you know...
See if they want to come to our next meeting or if they want to set up something separately.
Yeah, either way.
And asking about the financial justification, we know what it costs, but we don't know where the revenue is.
Right.
All right. Motion to adopt resolution 2024-09 municipal mitigation plan.
What do we know about this?
Yeah, what is this?
This is a county plan that I believe is required by state or federal levels of government. And the county is fulfilling your legal obligation as a municipality to create this hazard mitigation plan and they do it on behalf of every municipality in the county. I confess, I haven't looked at it, but my, my understanding, it is a legal obligation of every municipality to have this hazard mitigation plan and I would recommend that you adopt this resolution in order to have the county plan satisfy the municipality's legal obligation.
I'll make the motion that we adopt it.
One second.
All in favor? Provide engagement letter, if you talk about instead of budget. Make a motion that we approve it.
One second.
All in favor? Motion for resolution 2024-10 disposal and destruction of records. I make the motion that we approve it. All in favor?
Just based on the same pattern that, you know?
Yes.
Following the same trail, okay.
Approval of Matthew Goyer as a new full-time road crew member. Robbie, have you presented the offer and he accepted?
Yep. Looks like everything's here that we talked about. I'll make a motion, we approve it.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, engineers report, Solar Farm.
Solar Farm, so we had the site meeting with Kurt's family, Ron's wife and they discussed mainly how to resolve that. The email I forwarded to you made it sound as if the Hillstone was coming in in the spring. Part of what they've been discussing over the past few weeks was Ron was more comfortable with the company that he knew locally to do that. They negotiated, it wasn't the original quotes there that were provided by him, but Hillstone agreed to it. So they're, they're going to basically have them come in in the spring and finish every month. So in my opinion, that area over there, that's been, that's going to be addressed and completed on that, completed by Ron and whatever company he wants to come in. Obviously, we're going to have to go walk through and there's still the conservation district and township that signs off on it, but there's been resolution, so, short of that, they're not, they're still on hold until spring. I did have a discussion with them, Sam had brought up a couple of points. They have a fence right after the railroad bridge, it's just not working, they've acknowledged that. There's, there's a couple of things that are still on their punch list that are bigger items that they'll be getting into, but that's going to be again, until they mobilize back into the site, they're fixing what they need to and then they'll come in in spring and start kicking away at the big items.
And one they used, relieve, relieve of Fleetwood Lines Highway, that was going to be a problem too.
Yeah.
They're going to have to modify that.
It just, this, right now, there's so much debris coming over that, through that, it gets caught up a lot more than they even designed for. Because that one near the Fleetwood Lines Road, kind of assumes you're going to have stuff coming through, but the bars still hold up, so. I, I, hopefully, when they stabilize everything, you're going to have a lot less material coming through the property, but
I guess that's the idea.
We'll see, yeah. So that's, that's kind of on hold until the spring. The open space, I had reached out to two companies that were recommended by other local municipalities for playground design or the, the kind of parks and recreation. One of them has fairly highly recommended, you hear their name all over, YSM is the, the name and I only say that just because I'm surprised they showed interest and they just have not filed back up to try it. Robbie has reached out to Watkins Architects, who's local, it sounds like that might be a good direction to go with it. And if they're responding and talking to them, I'd say stick with that and see what they give.
So you must have reached out to them last week?
I called them to see what we needed to do or what information needed from us in order to get something started.
Because I called the next day.
Okay.
Robbie just talked to us, we were on the same page.
Yeah, I was just trying to find out what we needed to do.
Did they get, did they give you back feedback? Because I didn't even get into it, I said, hey, Robbie took a look at this, I'll just talk to them.
There is really nothing that we sort of discussed, because I want to talk with you guys today about which direction we wanted to go, but that's something that they can definitely help us with.
Okay.
That's what I was hoping to be...
All right.
And if they're willing to do that, I think that, that little sketch after we met with Grande, you show them that, they can convert it. Something with the parking lots and the layouts there, that's something we can do, but when you get into the parks, I'd rather have somebody that, that does that day to day, that really recommends to you and gives you the cause of those involved with it. As far as Grande is concerned, they are going to be getting in... As far as Grande is concerned, they are going to be getting in before the next meeting to complete the the lighting. So that'll be done in the next month. And of course, as soon as that's done, they want to move forward with talks on the dedication and where that goes. So I told them we're looking at the hard part of it and figure that part out. And so they'll be jumping at the bit for how do we proceed? And if that is going to become something that the townships move forward with what that entails.
All right.
So they have, they have really everything, but that open space area is in their hands left to kind of address, so. That's that one. Lynn Pedding's church, they had the expansion on the back of their property. Really, it was just a parking lot expansion. They also had some building renovations. I think those are pretty, pretty close to being mapped out. We have money held when they first put in that driveway that went back into the field. Until we see this in the spring, the conservation district isn't, wouldn't be worried with a small project. So I want to make sure we see that site stabilized and everything the conservation district typically would before we release that one. But they're all but mapped up on that site. Sheet's land development, the quick and easy part of it is they're at the end of their review, they are providing a letter for an extension until April 30th, 2024. I believe, Chris, we typically have the board accept the extension. So that would need to be accepted by the board for that plan review.
I'll make a motion we accept it. All in favor?
So they are continuing their reviews with the state. I mean, that's been their biggest holdup. I think there was a pause for a while, which leads into the next one there. They have to modify the stormwater basin at the front of the property. And part of that was, well, you're in PennDOT right of way, you need that approval. What PennDOT typically requires is, just like if there's a traffic signal, the township has to be the applicant. They're asking for the township to be an applicant, and there's a form. I didn't print it out. I have it right here. Do you have? Oh, yes. So they had filled this out, but basically, the township would be the applicant. Panoni, who is their engineer, would be the agent to basically go through the process. What we asked them is to enter in a separate agreement that would, just the PennDOT would do in this situation, sign off that says you will install, own and maintain any facilities associated with whatever you're doing. Chris, that's something typically have a form agreement for that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So then it would. We would need to have the board approve signing of this, it's the PennDOT M950AA form conditional upon entering into that agreement for installing, owning and maintaining all facilities. It's pretty standard procedure.
No reasonable ownership.
Yeah, I'll make that.
As long as they enter to that agreement, I'm satisfied.
I'll make. I'll second.
Did you have any conversation about needing that?
Yeah, they they've, they've agreed to everything that we were saying as far as the agreements.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
These Penn, just, I was going to give an update, but they went ahead and submitted. So we have two sketch plans here for these Penn manufacturing. Ultimately, they're looking to possibly get a waiver of land development on these. I think one may fit that definition. The other one, I think we got to look at it with planning commission to get their opinion. One is really building, it's extending a building to allow for more room. Except on the interior, what they're doing, they're just on top of each other with the equipment. There is an existing dock that they're just going to bump out. The total of the building, I think, is less than 4,000 square feet. I think it's more like a 2,500, somewhere in there. It's all impervious area, the storm sewer is still connected to the same area. They they claim there's no need for additional parking. It really would be pretty low impact. The other project is an expansion of their sewer system on the property. Apparently, the Lions Borough receives the sewage from there. They treat it before it goes. And and part of their new regulations, they had to decrease, not to get into specifics, but a lot of what's coming from their property. By expanding, they're able to meet that. But they're putting a building of about 5,000 square feet, which is somewhat impervious, some not. That's the one I just think. Some of these smaller buildings, as we review them, it makes sense for those waiver of land development. I'm not sure that one will or will not. If if it doesn't, then it'd go through probably the sketch plan right to the final. But just giving heads up, the little background of what they're submitting. And they had a meeting with myself, Jeff and Glenn Kraft to just review the ideas of where they're going with these. The one that may not qualify for the waiver isn't as much of a rush as the other one is. So that's kind of good for both parties if that's true. But we'll see when we get it. So I was just going to provide that update. The street work, Robbie had given me a a list of streets, and I started putting the cost together. I was going to hopefully get that turned around and try to discuss some of it tonight, but I just hadn't had the time to do that. I think once I get that, I'll send it to Robbie to look at. As long as we're on the same page with cost and we'll look at that, we'll probably forward it to you before the next meeting, just to have it reviewed and give you our thoughts.
Probably have to get on that pretty directly. You got the building list included this year? A lot?
Yeah.
Yep, that's it, right? Well, two, but I can't remember what it was. Think about it, I'll let you know. Can't remember. So. All right.
That was it on the list I had, unless there's any questions.
I'd like to add to your report. And I'm going to ask the board to amend the agenda on the basis that we have. What is the rule? We have a clear and present danger to property. Clear and danger, clear and present danger to property is this expiring letter of credit, which is a substantial piece of property with a value of $151,765.42. So this is the Hefner project. It's very old, it's approved and recorded plan. Financial security secures the improvements that are required by that plan. And we have had this sort of back and forth for a number of years with the Hefners about whether they want to keep that plan or let it go. And we have advised them that if they want to not pay the cost to keep this letter of credit in place, they need to sign an agreement that can be recorded at the courthouse that says that they are giving up all their rights in the recorded land development plan for their project. What does this protect? Okay, this.
This is probably 110 years old?
More than that. It's, I think it was a self-storage business, if my memory is correct. And anyway, so there's substantial improvements. And the risk is that if we don't make a claim on this, that, you know, he could potentially start the project, but not complete the improvements and cause downstream harm to his neighbors, you know, because a lot of this is probably stormwater facilities. And if we don't have the letter of credit, there is potential liability that could come back on the township. If he starts the project, it doesn't finish it and causes harm to other property owners in the neighborhood. So what I'm going to ask you to do, not only to amend the agenda, but also to consider a motion authorizing me to make a claim on this letter of credit before it expires, which is March 8, 2024, unless the Hefners either extend this letter of credit again or finally sign the agreement that has been presented to them several times over the years that would terminate their rights in the approved and recorded land development plan. Any questions about that?
That's a little confusing, but I think there's a piece of wisdom in doing that.
Yeah, we we went through this, I think this is our third time we're through this with the letter of credit. It's not really our responsibility. We reach out to them, we either need to take care of it or we call the letter. I mean, that's.
Yeah, we can't.
We can't be in limbo.
Well, I, as your legal advisor, I can't let you fail to recognize the significance of this and, you know, either require him to submit that agreement or require him to extend the letter of credit or make a claim on the letter of credit.
I think we make a motion to do exactly what you suggested.
So what I would do is again, reach out to him about signing the agreement and let him know what we're going to do. And if he doesn't promptly respond, then we need to notify MT Bank that we're making a claim on the letter of credit.
And when does the the letter expire? March 8?
March 8, yeah.
We need to do that before the next one.
That's why I'm bringing.
Can I make that motion?
Well, second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you.
I've never heard of that before.
It was prior to, I have no idea. Yeah, I can't tell you how long this plan has been around. At least 10 years.
Okay, listeners report. Thank you. This first thing is the Tony Wood Service Report. We have two properties that the board has previously authorized us to transfer the district justice judgments to the parthenic area and then to start the process of share of sale of personal property. Again, you know, this is a procedure. I don't really want to take any personal property, but it's all we can do to take the next step, to put pressure on them to come forward and offer to pay something. And the ones I'm referring to are the 22 Berg Road property and the 554 Park Road property. So I just want you to be aware that we are taking that step and we will be notifying the property owner every time we take any action and hoping that they'll sweat a little bit and step up and offer some money. I want to ask if we've heard anything from Schilling.
No.
No, okay.
Left a voicemail message and no one has returned.
Are they paying anything?
No.
Oh, okay, because they had agreed to enter it to a payment plan, but when we signed the agreement, they didn't return it. And apparently, they're not making payments either. So I don't recall if we got a district justice judgment on that or not. If if not, then I would suggest that we pursue the district justice civil complaint against them. Is that, if that step hasn't already been taken, is the board agreeable with us doing that?
I'll make a motion. All in favor?
There's no other action that I'm recommending at this time. Do you have any questions? Thank you. And the next thing on the agenda is the ordinance. And this is regarding the fee schedule that PAMs had asked to be, you know, the amounts that they collect and charge for collection activities to be increased. Board was agreeable to those changes, but because they were previously approved as an ordinance, we have to have the board enact a new ordinance to modify those costs. But as part of that amendment to the ordinance, we are including language that says from this point forward, the board can change the fee schedule by resolution. So we aren't going to incur the costs of doing an amendment next time PAMs wants to change the fee schedule. So that has been advertised for your consideration of enactment tonight. I recommend a motion to enact ordinance 2024-01.
Can I make that motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance that we had discretion a couple of times about reducing the age at which someone could retire here in the township under the pension plan. So the new retirement age would be 16. What is it currently? Is it 65?
65.
Okay, so the current retirement age is 65, let's reduce it to 60. Doesn't increase the cost of the plan for the township, but it does make it easier for people to actually retire. This has been advertised, you had authorized it to be advertised at a prior meeting. And based on the board's action at prior meeting, I recommend you consider a motion now to enact ordinance 2024-02, reducing the pension age to 60.
Can I make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you. So the next thing is the Fleetwood Borough Authority Solar Array. And, you know, this is a case that had been heard by the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board rejected the Borough Authority's application for the onsite solar energy collection. And the, that was appealed by the Borough to the County Court of Common Pleas. The court there has remanded it back to the zoning hearing board for further hearing in order for the authority to provide more justification for the variance that it sought from the township zoning ordinance. And the issue in the case was a regulation in the township zoning ordinance that prohibits solar panels in between the building on the property and the street in front of the home. And a substantial portion of the solar panels in this project would be located in the area between the sewer plant and the road, which is not permitted under the current language of the township zoning ordinance. So the authority has asked the township to be willing to provide some input to the zoning hearing board about this case in hopes that this board of supervisors would recommend to the zoning hearing board granting the variance to enable the authority to do the project. I think part of the justification that the authority has offered is that the solar panels will save money for the authority. It will also save money for the Borough government because the solar panels are going to generate energy that almost matches the amount of of electricity used by both the authority at the treatment plant and the authority at its administrative office and the Borough government at its administrative office. And further, that this sewer system serves residents of the township who helped to pay for the operations of the sewage system so that, in a way, this solar project would benefit residents of Richmond Township or customers in the sewer system.
So I think the board supports the solar panels. I think when they came for the variance, there's a court of public opinion. I think we have a lot of people that have bad taste in that from the solar project alongside of Leaver Road. alongside of Leuwer Road. Solar panels are allowed at this project, the variance is, or the restriction is front yard. Technically, I guess this is the front yard, but they would have screening, and I don't think it's gonna be anything that's gonna be an ugly eyesore to the community. But I think what the community lacks to understand is the amount of cooperation and help we get from the Fleetwood Borough to keep the costs of sewer down in Walnut Town. If we would have to build a plant in Walnut Town, the price would be very difficult to absorb with the Walnut Town residents. So we get a huge benefit there. I think the residents do, and I think if they can reduce their costs with the electricity, that just keeps their costs down. We have a partnership with the police department. We could not have police without Fleetwood. It's just no way Richmond could support the police department. It's just, it's barely, it's barely doable now, but we pool our resources, and I think what they're asking is just asking something to keep the costs down for the residents. And I think that point might have been missed at the hearing. I wasn't at the hearing, but I support this idea. I'm not a big fan of taking farmland and putting it into solar panels, that's not my thing, but in this case, I think it makes sense for where it's at.
More so, because the demand is very close to point of generation here. That, it even makes more sense.
Yeah.
When, when that was part of the, the thinking, I think, that we looked at when we looked at the West of Lion Solar, the demand was right there. So...
Yeah, so...
I think we're all thinking that this is probably a good thing. And the problem, you know, with the, it's basically a technicality, in my mind, that would prevent them from doing this, but a minor zoning problem.
Right, and we could change the zoning. We'd rather not do that, it'd be a bit more expensive for the residents, for this particular, this particular item. And I, you know, I, I think if everybody knows the facts and the amount of cooperation we get from Fleetwood financially to be sustainable for a sewer, sewer project in Walnut Town and, and the police department, I mean, if we could help them save some money on the running of the plant, it transfers into keeping our costs down.
Yeah, this is pretty substantial, when you look at the...
Yes, minus point nine percent.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot.
Costs a lot of money to run a sewer plant.
So it's gonna benefit the residents, not just the Fleetwood Borough thing. So yeah, that's how we relay that support to the zoning hearing board.
Well, there's two options at least. One would be for the board to have a letter prepared and sent to the zoning hearing board with a copy to the Borough Authority. That would be one option. Another option would be for someone from the board to actually attend the hearing and to present testimony in support of the application.
When is the hearing?
Is it next week?
The twenty-second.
I, I think we should send a letter, and I also will attend the hearing. Let me just check. That's the Thursday night, yep, I can do that.
Okay, I'm sure they'll be pleased if someone from the board would testify.
Oh, yeah, I could, 'cause I'm sure they get a lot of heat. But I don't know that anybody, you know, understands the full amount of what, what goes into this, that we work with the Borough together.
All right. First, a listener asked me if someone would attend. May I tell him that he'll be there, right?
Yes.
Okay. And how do you want this letter to be prepared? Will be to draft something?
Uh, yeah, we would like to...
All right.
I would rather you take the lead on this one, to be honest.
All right.
Make it more official.
All right, I'll draft a letter. And obviously share it with you, review it before closing.
Did you want me to make copies of this as well, to go with the zoning hearing packets, or not?
Uh, to go to the zoning hearing board members.
Yes.
I think I attached this to the letter.
Okay.
And we'll get it to the zoning hearing board through that letter.
That's fine, okay.
Okay. And I think this is the same.
Yes, yep.
Any questions, David?
Yep.
Thank you. Roadmasters report.
We have to step back, I don't think we want to talk about it.
Oh, step back, sorry.
He only sent that email over this morning that I saw, so I don't have anything on the agenda for him, it was just an email, so.
He's not asking questions or any action.
Well, I read through the whole thing, and he talks about the anomalies due to flooding and rains.
Looks like one of, looks like one of ten times those two days, 'cause of, it's kind of sub pumps going.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't have sub pumps. I think we should send a letter. That's what he's recommending.
So that's, those are all renegade installations, I mean, that's how many things it is, people are just hooking up sub pumps to... Yeah, the, the high flow times were all during times of heavy rain. Is he sure we don't have ionized in the collection system?
No, 'cause we, we, we scoped the whole thing. We scoped two-thirds, but we have one-third left, and we find no leaks.
He was pretty confident that it wasn't infiltration, it was from him.
It's a side of us, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that's a violation of regulations for the operations of our system, so that would be a good idea to notify residents, but, you know. I, I think it would be good not just to tell them that they can't do it, but also to tell them what they should do. And what they should do is to discharge those sub pumps out of their yard, or, you know, something like that.
We should maybe get a letter from him, and then also say that we will be, you can do smoke tests, that we will be considering doing smoke tests in the future, you can catch whoever's doing that.
Yeah.
It's a clear violation.
So do you wanna ask Scott to prepare a...
Yeah. He knows what to do.
Okay.
All right, Robbie, you're up.
All right. We'll go back to the, the open space thing that Scott's talking about. Scott printed out a little sketch a while ago. I made some, some colorful marks on it to kinda give you guys an idea of the plan that we were looking at. I think all of you guys have that sketch up there. The, the blue outlined area is, is for the, the proposed baseball field. I'm pretty certain that the Fleetwood Baseball Association is still interested in the baseball field, and that, that would be dedicated, so to speak, to the baseball association to, to maintain. To the right of that blue outlined area is an orange outlined area. That would be a proposed playground for five to twelve-year-olds. The purple highlighted area would be a pavilion. Over to the parking lot, there would be another smaller playground for just, I think, the two to five-year-olds, and then another pavilion there next to the parking lot. Scott and I met with Grande, and they were willing at the time to do the, the parking lot and the leveling where the baseball field and the larger playground would be, I believe. And that's sort of where we left that meeting with Grande. So I think if, if Grande's ready to dedicate the development to us, I think we should try and come up with a plan to present to them...
Right.
Before that is done.
Correct. So do you think we should meet with Watkins and get a better idea?
Yeah, I think we could get, we could get a pretty good layout from them, and maybe get some specific dimensions of the flat areas, and then propose that to Grande, and this is what we're thinking, this is what we wanna do, and, and go from there, because there's, the dotted, or the hashed red lines, those are possible spots for ADA compliant paths, and Watkins also said that there needs to be ADA compliant pass to the park area also. So that's something that they could put on paper, and that's possibly something that we could get Grande to do at the same time. There's curb cutouts that need to be done, and sidewalk, and that sort of stuff.
Can you get a meeting set up with Watkins then?
Yep.
I'll, I'll participate if you'd like.
Okay.
We'll just sit down and get an idea of this.
Yeah, they, they basically said, whatever we wanted, they'll put that on paper, and then obviously they have some experience, know that sort of stuff, fine tune everything, just need to, to get them a plan and a direction to go.
Now, Fleetwood Borough, the Fleetwood School District was not willing to do any of the sidewalks, but they sure love more parking on their side at the, at the soccer field. Keep that in mind.
Yep.
That, that area over there, too, is a lot more accessible. If you could have some parking, it could accommodate the ADA. I think you could cut some costs, um, quitting that there and having, because the other one, you're going across the road...
Yeah.
Up a little incline, around a little sway later.
So maybe we meet with Watkins, get a good feel on that, and keep it moving. Because I, I called him the next day.
Yeah.
Said, well, Robbie just called.
I actually had a meeting set up with you today at eleven o'clock, but I decided to cancel it, and we discussed here what, what we wanted to do specifically.
Sounds good.
So...
Let's keep it moving.
Oh, and the, the green marks, those are just some type of tree for separation, because the back, the, the back of the, the houses in the Willacris Development butt up against that park area, so to speak. That's what the green dots are.
Yeah, Watkins could help you with the stuff you never think of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how we gotta get it. The, the fence up at the sewer plant has been repaired, fixed, and the, the rolling gate has been installed. I know we got proposals for that maybe a year ago, but they were finally able to do that, that's all complete. We're going to purchase a new used mower, be able to maintain that open space area. I believe Jen has a track for you guys for that.
Yep.
And I talked to Chris about the agreement between Albany and Mexico City Township about jointing with the, the oil and chip, and he hasn't heard anything back, but I was hoping to sort of get an answer, if that's something that we can proceed with. They are looking to get quotes together, or prices, or specs to be able to put it out for bid for their March meeting.
Did you talk to anybody up there about why we haven't heard back from them?
I did, and I know they kinda work a little slower than, than what we do here. Takes a little bit longer, but I can, I can reach out to somebody tomorrow and ask them what the deal is.
Well, just so the board understand, I had Michelle Mayfield from my office to look at this, and she's done a couple of agreements like this, and she had some comments that she thought there needed to be some provisions to this draft agreement, some of it frankly doesn't quite make sense, it's a little bit rough in the drafting, and, you know, I think it's a good project. I think it would be a benefit to Richmond Township, but I also want there to be a solid agreement in place for how it's gonna be used, and how it's gonna be paid for and maintained. So, you know, I guess I'd be willing to have the board make a motion that they support this agreement, but only if the wording in the agreement is satisfactory to the solicitor or something like that, so that we don't, you know, sign up for something.
Right. That, that's what I was gonna recommend, is we could just give a verbal approval, and then contingent on your review of that agreement, if that's something that we can proceed with, and then we can proceed with, yeah, I can proceed with figuring out some measurements for the rest, and see how everything would work out.
Yeah, 'cause I think Michelle may have even asked them to send us a word version of the document, so we can mark it up, and I don't think they even did that, so I think they just didn't get back to us at all. But again, I think the concept has merit. We just don't wanna see the township sign the agreement unless it's satisfactory.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I can do that.
I think...
I think...
A satisfactory agreement.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye. All right. Are you gonna try to chase after them?
Yeah, I can call somebody tomorrow and see, see about getting an answer on what is staying with that.
If, if your contact says there's something that I need to talk to, try to find out who that is, and get you that contact information.
Right, thank you. And I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of that mower.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else, Robbie?
I don't think so, Jen. Do we need to talk about doing the, the grant stuff?
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. That's all I have, I think. The, the new truck is at Berman. The new crane liner came in maybe last week, so that's gonna be going down the truck shortly if you get updated.
Do they have all the stuff down there?
Yep, everything's in, minus the cloud.
Should be just in time for spring.
I don't care when it comes, as long as it comes before November.
I think you're, hey, I shouldn't even say it. Watkins is here so far. Well, we had snow in March.
Yep.
Were you over to see it?
I was up, just up there this morning to check it out.
Will it work?
I believe so.
Payment of the bills. Secretary of Treasury.
The general fund, we have check numbers 11302 to 11354, including EFTs for $163,664.82.
Make a motion, we'll pay it.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
State fund, we had check number 2125 for $8,987.16.
Make a motion, we'll pay it.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Light fund, we did not have any checks. Sewer fund, check numbers 3171 to 3180, including EFTs for $60,569.59.
Make a motion, we'll pay it.
One second. All in favor?
Walnut Town Fire Escrow, check numbers 2173 and 2174, for a total of $25,270.44.
Make a motion, we'll pay it.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Virginville Fire Escrow, check numbers 2173 and 2174, for $21,719.37.
I'll make a motion, we'll pay it.
One second. All in favor?
Okay.
We did have, we have some lower funds in the light fund. We do have, because of the actual tax billing for the light, the actual residents that pay for the light taxes, that won't be coming in until I do leave, may. We have the light bills that are about $800, and we have about $700 in the account, we don't wanna take on the negative, I just need to, an approval to transfer some funds from the general fund into the light fund, so we don't have any negative balance in there.
So just to borrow money from the...
Yeah, mhm.
So we've never had that before, we've always budgeted well, did the, probably the electric price went up pretty drastically.
Yeah, we left the light, it was gonna be low... Yeah, we left the light, it was gonna be low during the budget, but we decided to keep it the same, yes.
So I'm okay approving that temporary loan, but we'll have to address that default.
Right, okay.
But we'll also have Little Creek.
Sure.
So that, that'll be a wrinkle in the, knowing what that cost will be. There's a lot more, there's a lot.
Transfer a little bit from the general fund just to get the bills done until the taxes come in.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. What else? All in favor?
And we did have, in January, we had Sherp Excavating do repairs to the Southview project once again with some more concrete blocks. And I'm just looking to see if we could transfer the funds from the ARPA fund to support the project, which was $2,815.75 total.
Perfect application.
Yep, I'll make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
And that was reasonable for that project. I want to drive over and check it out.
And that's all I have.
I have nothing to report at participation from the floor.
Ask you a question, just for clarity on this thing. Something Chris touched on earlier. It's actually need number 11 at Lifeline EMS. It, it mentioned 18 grand roughly at a cost of $5 a resident. What's, what's that get the resident?
What's that what?
What's that get the resident other than $5?
They're committed to providing ambulance service throughout the community. And there are some promises to residents in the area, but I don't want to misquote it.
Basically for the ambulance service that we've been using. And they still charge, they still charge the residents, the insurance, the ones that have insurance. Just to reduce their costs.
So if a resident calls, that's who's coming. Nobody else but them.
That's who's coming.
They're contracted with the.
Well, what's gonna happen is you call 911. Lifeline is on first call. If their ambulances are all dispatched, there'll be somebody who will provide mutual aid to the ambulance service in this community. So it is possible you'll get a different ambulance if there's no Lifeline ambulance available. You'll get an ambulance, but the first call is to Lifeline if they are available. So, I mean, basically it's to, they're promising that ambulances will be provided to the residents of the township on a 24-hour basis. That their staff will be duly licensed and good standing with the Department of Health. They'll provide both ALS and BLS, emergency care services. Anyway, I mean, they're, they're gonna, they're promising that they will do things appropriately. But I thought there was also something about ability. Well, they're in charge and making all collections. The township is not. Okay, here it is. There's. There's language they're not gonna, they're not gonna discriminate on the basis of the ability to pay. So, trying to find that language. I haven't found it yet. But there's something here that effectively says that, you know, they, they will pick up any resident or visitor who's located here in the township, regardless of their ability to pay. That doesn't mean they won't be billed, but they will provide the service regardless of their ability to pay. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chris.
All right, anything else? Do we have to go to executive session?
Yeah, there's a, before I, yeah, there's a potential legal issue. I guess it's a potential litigation matter depending on how it would proceed. And I'd like to discuss it with the board.
All right, well I'll call an executive session. We can go to the officer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Come out after we're done. You don't further need for Scott to.
I don't know. I know Scott.
That's for sure. Yeah, you ought to come back.
Good job. Let's move up to them just one second.
Probably got to.
Okay. Do have to get to the.
Yeah.
Is this an issue?
Looks like the candle flash.
Possibly that's the reason they get this feature on back. It's nice one day. Okay, we'll make a complaint and submit to Jen, get it to township.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Like Sherp did that job, what they said. They were there like two days, from what I heard.
I like a day and a half, I think.
Yeah, more or less.
Tired of messing around over there. It's just for us to, I mean, we, we paid that, that price there with what they said. That's what us paid the price of the blocks. So we put another, I don't know, did you see what they did?
Yeah, he dug down.
He dug down, buried like a, one of those full blocks and then set another row on top. But I don't know, I don't know. I might have lost what to do there. I mean, that whole thing should have worked, you know?
Oh yeah, I mean, I know down through my, down through, you know, it's just, just changes, just changes constantly.
Yeah.
Like I know when, months back, when the guy from the conservation district was here and stuff and I asked about like, it's like to get to my backyard. Oh, well you'd have to, you know, get an engineer involved and I'm like, to do a shallow stream crossing or a clean, it washes everything out. Doesn't matter what you put in there. I mean, you know, it's washed rock. Your rock from above, this big, down past my garage. I'm like, I couldn't put anything in there and expect it to stay. Every time it rains moderate, you know, pretty decent, it pushes sand, sediment, small rock, just down through. That's what I'll, you know, I'd like to be able to kind of go in and just make the channel. But I know there's too many pictures taken over there to make it. And you know, you do the stuff and, and a chip might fall just fine or somebody gets a, a grudge. And I know down, down from me, they, every move I make, they're watching. Leave it alone. See what logs they got. When they left. The crane was sitting up there at the, where his big logs are. Dropping more. Never know when they're coming or what they're bringing.
Yeah.
I'd like to figure out, well, trying to get a way to move them. They're little, some of them are pretty heavy.
Yeah.
And they get close to two ton. Really like to get a mill. Just slab them.
Make some slabs.
It's a board slabs. Out of the better stuff. I watch a YouTuber that has a big wood mice for mill. He was slabbing walnut. My wife says, what's he doing with it? I say, well, he takes it to a guy that has the eye dry kiln, kiln dries it. And then he sells it. She's like, oh, I'd make you make tables out of it. I'm like, yeah, that's a lot more work to make epoxy tables. Yeah, you can make more money, but you're putting a heck of a lot more into. My tenant there asked me if I ever, there's a big tree base. She's like, well, if you ever, she's like, she wants a cookie, you know, like two, two to three inch slab. Cause she wants to make a tabletop out of it. I'm like, yeah, if I ever get to slabbing or doing something. That thing's, it's pretty far across. I mean, I have a 24-inch bar on a chainsaw, but I'm like, I don't know if I'd make it. It's hard to keep that perfect round the whole way around and not get off. As if that guy has the eye dry kiln. He has a slab flattener and it just increased the size. He can do, I think it's six feet by 14 foot slab. Or chunk. Yeah. Yeah, I know the guy there in the trailer, he was, he was gonna put shed in up there. I think he might be moving forward with that.
No comment?
Cause I seen him, he was, well, he asked me about getting, like crushed concrete. I see he has some there now. Yeah. That stream needs to get straightened the whole way up through there. I just don't know where all the sediment come from. Cause like where I cross, I can just pull a little bit up to make it better and leave a hole. And with the next moderate rain, just fills it all in. Sand, small rock. It's full. Where's it all come from? And it's not like you see the street, like above changing a lot. And I was like, I didn't think that the elevation fall was that great down across there to keep moving the material. Cause I know well down there, what, three, four houses down from me and all through that back, it's pretty much sand and small rock in a lot of the land lying areas of the yards now from the last couple moderate rains. Which I never understood that guy, when July, he had, I don't know, 80, 100 ton. And he gets a skid letter and he hauls it all away. I'm like, why wouldn't you just go up in your yard and dig a burrow pit and just push it all in and then cover it with the better dirt and plant grass? And then you're, you wouldn't have as much drop into the stream. Just like in the back, it's low. I was like, I don't know. I wouldn't haul it all away. Just bury it. Plant grass and be done. Must be gonna get bad. Fleetwood School District closed tomorrow.
I saw that.
Okay, that, that session ended at eight forty-three. I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Triple bypass.
Triple.
How's it going?
Good. Look at the cardiologist today, he wants him to, uh,